Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the meeting into order, please, with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to our meeting tonight. Roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Hallam.
Yes.
Odie.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Telkot.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
All right. If there are no changes that need to be made on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented, please. Second? There's been a first and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Two conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests for your review, for our review tonight?
Yeah, Madam Chair, we have two items. The first is for Dr. Larson, Superintendent. My wife, Amanda Larson, is a registered nurse. She needs continuing employment hours or continuing hours of service as a registered nurse to maintain her license, so she's going to be so helpful as to volunteer this year for us for up to 140 hours. And then, in addition to that, she'll be able to provide substitute nursing services if that is necessary moving forward. Obviously, the volunteer hours are not paid, and the substitute hours are paid in accordance to our previously established dollar amount for substitute nurses. So I am extremely excited to increase our number of student health services personnel with some volunteer hours. So, there you go. It does need board approval.
All right. And the second one? Do we need any?
The second one is the second year of the three-year early retirement benefit for Dr. Telkot. It is outlined in the master agreement. Last year, it was approved as year one. This is the year, this is year two of that. The third year would be, would be next year. Certainly recommend approval on both.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the two conflict of interest disclosure and waiver requests that are in front of us tonight.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Lombard?
What was the order?
What was the order on the, who made the motion?
Odie.
Who seconded? Oh. Thought I heard you both times. I'm sorry. Odie.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Telkot.
I'm Steve.
Hallam.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to our next item, approval of the regular annual meeting that we had on July 13th, 2020. If there are no questions or concerns on that, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented, please. So moved. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. That takes us to our next item, community input. We have a couple people that will be presenting tonight.
Yes, Madam Chair, in the order in which the requests were received, certainly invite to the, to the podium, Dr. Benjamin Aker, President of the South Dakota Medical Association. Dr. Aker, you're gonna want to just touch the speak button, and when you have a red light, you're live.
I think I'm live. Thank you for the introduction. I'm Benjamin Aker, medical doctor, emergency medicine in Yankton, but live here in Brandon. I'm here representing the South Dakota State Medical Association. This hat is really annoying. Sorry, I'll take it off if you permit me to. Something that, you know, never could wear in school. If they saw you were in the school, well, you'd have to take that off as a rule that we had in my school. But I like to wear my hat, and I'm an independent-minded person, and it's a freedom that I have as an adult, and I can wear my hat when I want to. I can wear it in here, too, but it's hard to talk and do this. But if I'm a child in the school district, that, there's times where you can't wear that hat, and it's just infringing on the rights of students, or it's helping to facilitate education. There was hat, there's chewing gum. We don't, we didn't allow it in my day, at least, to have chewing gum in the schools, and you kids are taking that gum out and they're putting it under the desks, and it's disgusting and nasty, and it's just an awful thing. And now, in the days of COVID, you know, they could be in that, in that gum. And it's, I'm glad that school districts everywhere have, or had in those days banned gum because of those kinds of things. Another thing where, you know, I, I respect my right and all the adults' right to chew gum, but students, sometimes we have to make a, make a difference in that. Also, some of you, thank you for meeting over your dinner hour. Maybe some of you thought, maybe I should have something to eat along, bring a energy bar or something, and you looked on the back of that and you saw it had peanuts in it, and you thought, well, may I better not have that in school, because there's some kids who have a peanut allergy, and they shouldn't have that in school. Peanuts are not allowed in certain parts of the school, and you don't serve it in your lunches. And you take those, those rights that you have, and you, you respect other people, and you do some things that might, you think infringe on the rights or make it inconvenient to you. I'm wearing a mask today. It's hard to talk with this mask. I couldn't find the door. I had to walk around. I'm breathing heavy with this mask. It's hard. I, it just bogs up the glasses. You know, it's not an easy thing to do. But I'm here by, by the 2,000 members of the State Medical Association to respectfully ask you to pass a mandatory mask mandate for the students, teachers, and faculty and staff in your school district, with a few exceptions that, if you want to know about those exceptions, we can go into those later. We think that the coronavirus pandemic is getting better, and it seems like sometimes the, the numbers go down and it gets better, and then they come back up. And I watch the South Dakota Department of Health website every week in my role as president, and this last week, it went up again. You may have heard about the children's camp where they had the increase, and there's a couple office buildings in Sioux Falls that now have outbreaks, and they just kind of keeps on coming. We've done a great job, I think, in South Dakota so far of, of helping to limit these, these outbreaks, but they, they're just going to happen, and until we, we continue working harder to decrease those, it's, it's going to keep on happening. It can be a problem because of the health of our people. But, you know, kids don't really get sick very much, right? Well, it turns out that they still can get sick, and they still can get really sick, and they still can die, but it's a lot less likely, thankfully. But you don't want that to happen to any of your students. You don't want it to happen to any of your children. I'm here today to not rehash things that have been told to you before, and my talk is about seven minutes long, and I'm just here to give you some new information, look at the science. As a physician, State Medical Association, we're not here to tell you what to do, not here to tell you to pass a resolution or not. We're here to give you advice, and our advice comes from the best science that we have and that we're, that we're putting out. You know, the, there's 340,000 cases of kids in the United States who have gotten sick with coronavirus since the pandemic started. 340,000. That's 9% of all people in the United States who have gotten coronavirus. It's, it's kids, so almost 1 in 10. So they can still get it, and they can still go into the hospital. About 1.4% of kids who get coronavirus infection will need to be hospitalized for that. And about 1% of all COVID deaths in the United States, so if anybody who dies because of coronavirus, 1% of those have been children. So this is from the American Academy of Pediatrics. So that doesn't mean that if a kid gets sick, they have 1% chance of dying. That just means of all the people who've died, 1% of them have been kids. So what happens to kids, it happens to our kids, and it can happen to our kids in Brandon Valley School District. You may have heard of the Sick Kids Opinion piece that was out that was made by some doctors in a foreign country, in Canada, in Toronto. That was a proponent of people who are opposed to masks. They said, well, sick kids, they said, don't, you don't need to wear masks in schools. And this was back in June when they put that out. It was, it kind of became big in South Dakota for a while about referencing the sick kids. I can give you the reference later of all these things if you want. And they said, well, you shouldn't wear masks, because sick kids said you don't need to wear masks in schools. And then it turns out that they revised that. They, they looked at the data. In July 29th, just last week, they said, okay, now we actually, we were wrong. We, we updated it. We now know that you should be wearing masks in high schools and in middle schools. They didn't go so far as to say elementary schools, although we're asking you for elementary schools as well as the State Medical Association today. And I think that they will, over time, they're going to come around and they're going to say that, say that, too. You know, why should we wear masks? Well, we know now, the science says that masks help decrease the risk of transmission. If I have coronavirus and I'm wearing a mask, it's less likely for me to give it to all of you. I'm here speaking, I'm talking loudly, any of those speech droplets, as they say, if I wasn't wearing this mask, it could be coming out to all of you. I hope I don't have it, but we know that you can be transmissible, you can give it to other people without even having symptoms. And that is asymptomatic transmission or pre-symptomatic transmissions. Before you get sick, you can give it to other people. That's what makes this disease such a dangerous thing, such a bad thing, is that if you do get sick, hopefully you're going to respect other people and you're going to self-isolate. But if you don't know that you're sick, you can be giving it to other people. And that's why, one of the reasons why we wear masks. It protects yourself and others. But a lot of opponents of masks have said, well, what about touching the mask? You know, that mask is annoying. You're touching it, you're adjusting things on your face all the time, and you're touching. Well, I say to that, yes, that's, that's a problem. That's a risk, you know, with any treatment that we have, there's a risk with it, and the risk is touching your face. So that's why hand washing is so important. We want to wash our hands and keep our hands clean before we adjust or touch our mask. And another thing that, that people would say, well, the students, you know, they're, they're kids, what, how are they gonna, how are we gonna get them to do that? And, and it's hard, too. You know, the enforcement issue, I've talked to a number of school board presidents and superintendents, and they've said, how about enforcement? How are you gonna get the kids to do it? And that's, I, I agree, that's a hard thing. But I think that as schools and school boards and teachers, you've been doing this enforcement thing for years. The hats, you've been, you know, if I wore a hat in high school, there would be punishment, and there would have been gentle punishment at first, and if I continued on wearing that, it would escalate. But they were always kind about what they did, and they could get the students to do what they wanted to, for the most part. I think there's always going to be some kids who are not following the rules. But that's, you know, that's part of growing up and learning, and that's why we need to educate our kids. You know, touching the mask, you know, the hand sanitizer over there, have you ever thought about how many germs are on the top of that hand sanitizer? People come in, they sneeze, and they touch the top. That's awful. It's filthy. But you do it anyway, because the benefit that you get from it is to get hand sanitizer on your hand, and then you rub it, and you get rid of all the filth that's on there, kill the virus that's on there. So there, there is risk to everything that we do, but we believe that it is less risky to the health of the children and the public to be wearing masks rather than not. And so for a minute here, I'm gonna become a politician. Now, in my role as State Medical Association President, I kind of have to be a politician a little bit, and I try to step in your shoes. I've never been on a school board, so I don't know exactly what it's like, but I know you have lots of loud voices coming at you from all directions, saying, do this, don't do this, do this, do that. And it's hard to make that decision on one way or not. But I really think that there's not, it's not a three-way decision, like some people would have you say. There's either mandating masks or there's not mandating masks. There's not a middle of the road. You're gonna either have kids wearing masks because you mandate it, or some of them are gonna wear it, and they're gonna get bullied into not wearing it, or some of them are going to not wear it, and they're going to shame kids into wearing it, as you saw in Georgia. If you're watching the news in Georgia, little town of Dallas, Georgia, 11,000 community last week, they had a policy, the school board had a policy that said, you are, you can wear masks if you want, but we're not going to mandate it, and we're going to do social distancing, distancing to try to mitigate that issue. I'm thankful that you all are doing the social distancing here. They did that, and they said, we're gonna do that. They, they went, in between classes, all the kids went out in the hallways, not very many of them wearing masks. This young lady took some pictures on her phone and a video, you can find it on the internet, it went viral. Well, she wasn't supposed to be using her phone in between classes, and so that was against the rules. And the school rightly said, you're against the rules, we're going to suspend you for that, because that was their rule. And so they suspended her, this thing went viral, and then the school ended up kind of getting a black eye, because it's, you're not social distancing. You said you were gonna social distance, you didn't do it. So I think you have to be one way or the other, and you can't be, you can't be like, we're not gonna use masks at all. So you're really gonna have to be, you know, we're, if we're, if you're doing one thing, it's gonna be either wearing masks, or it's gonna be free for all. And I just worry about the, you know, she, the, this, this young lady, she was shaming them into it. And so there's, there's gonna be shaming, there's gonna be bullying unless you take a stand and you, you make a decision. So again, as a politician, I would ask you to mandate mask-wearing, but say, let's, let's, let's take it easy. We're gonna do this for eight weeks or whatever timeframe. We're gonna have a sunset on this. We're gonna reevaluate it. Sorry that you have to listen to maybe more people coming up and talking to you again in eight weeks, but I'll only talk to you if you ask me to. But that might be the right thing to do. Take some time to make your, your decision, and don't just kind of go into this and have what happened in, in Georgia or something worse where kids get sick. So I, thank you for your time. I appreciate your letting me speak to you as a president of the medical association, and I'll certainly answer questions. I don't know if that's part of this or not, but I'll step down now. Thank you.
Madam Chair, next up is Joan Kristofferson.
As Dr. Larson said, my name is Joan Kristofferson, and I'm a human resource manager for a local company here in Sioux Falls. I'm also OSHA 10 certified, so I've gone to OSHA training and learned a lot about the safety of employees, which crosses over into what I do as a mom. I have two kids that graduated from the Brandon Valley School District, one just this May, so we're pretty excited that she got to walk, and I thank you guys for that. I also have an incoming freshman coming into the, or into the Brandon Valley High School, and I'm here tonight to ask the board to stand behind their decision on not mandating masks. As I stated, I'm OSHA certified. In my research through the osha.gov website and Mayo Clinic, the COVID-19 virus is .12 microns in size, and the N95 mask, which would provide the highest filtration of any over-the-counter mask that we could purchase, filters down to .3, which is obviously larger than the virus itself. So that virus can penetrate through the mask just because of the nature of the fibers. This being said, most masks have, the N95 has to be fitted specifically for it to be effective. I don't know about any of you, but even with my OSHA 10 certification, I do not have the ability to have somebody fit me correctly for an N95 mask. So you have to have the resources to have that N95 mask fitted, but you also have to know how to wear it effectively. Next, I'd like to talk about information that I learned from the Mayo Clinic's website. What the Mayo Clinic is saying is, as we exhale, we create condensation, and that condensation in that mask makes the mask ineffective to, to filter out that virus. So if a child, a student in the high school or middle school, was wearing a mask and they had condensation from their breath, what the Mayo Clinic is saying is that mask would be ineffective because of the moisture that is in that mask. So now the virus is just filtering through. So we have students wear masks, they're breathing normally if they aren't having any anxiety issues, they're breathing through this mask, they have moisture condensating in that mask. After a period of time, that mask becomes ineffective. They still have the mask on their face, they're gonna continue touching their face, they're gonna continue adjusting that. I applaud the Brandon Valley School District for asking what families want. As you may recall, there were 3,506 respondents to the survey that was sent out several weeks ago. 24.33% of those people want a mask to be mandatory. 75.67% want a mask to be optional. The value of this survey is null and void if the opinions of the surveyed are not considered. We were given options whether to enroll our students traditionally or via distance learning. I am certain that parents consider the school board's decision whether to mandate masks and the decision whether to distance learn. Our family certainly did. We are now nine days away from the first day of school, and some are feeling confused about why we're revisiting the board's decision when we haven't even entered school yet. While none of us will argue whether COVID exists or not, we have to take a common sense approach for the safety of our kids. As of Saturday, August 8th, there were 98 new cases in the entire state with a total active case number of 983. The total number of people currently hospitalized was 47, and there were 144 deaths, none of which were children under the age of 19. According to the CDC, in 2019, there were 78 deaths associated with pediatric influenza. Did we cancel school? No. Did we ask that everyone wear a mask? No. We continued what we doing in our, what we do in our community. We washed our hands, we made our kids stay home if they were sick. I would ask that we handle COVID in the same manner. Instead of mandating masks, maybe we need to look at extending the school day by 25 minutes to add additional time for kids to wash their hands in between classes, which is the best defense to treating, eliminating the COVID virus. According to John Hot, the Johns Hopkins University, the membrane that encases the COVID-19 virus is so weak that the friction of rubbing your hands together will burst that membrane. Combined with this action with soap and water, can kill the virus instantly. We have received numerous reports that hand washing and limiting exposure to people who are sick with COVID is the best defense in staying healthy. This is going to require parents to keep their kids home when they are sick, which is the best practice since the dawn of time. It's common sense. It's also common sense to understand that masks are not for everyone. The definite, definition of health is not solely about an individual's physical health. We need to consider the mental, emotional, and spiritual health of the, to maintain a healthy body. Mandating masks could have a negative consequence for some people. For example, students with autism or other sensory or behavioral disorders, or students with special needs or other medical conditions. The CDC does not recommend that people with asthma wear masks on a long-term basis. There are many students that would have negative impacts by wearing a mask for a full day of school. My personal experience is that I have a daughter that describes wearing a mask as a suffocating feeling, where her heart starts to beat fast and she can't catch her breath. Making her wear a mask in a local store gives this child severe anxiety. When we talked to our medical professional about getting an exemption, we were told, we will not give notes for that. That was at a local clinic here in Brandon. That was very disappointing, since anxiety is a medical condition that's protected by the Americans with Disabilities Act. If we cannot get a doctor's note for a child that cannot tolerate wearing a mask, we are putting them in a lose-lose situation. They will lose their ability to focus and be productive at school because their anxiety could overshadow their ability to learn. In addition, the anxiety will negatively impact their mental health. There is another negative consequence to mandating masks. We are increasing our child's risk of COVID-19 through increased touching of the face and the mask. The relative exposure that COVID takes is through the eyes, nose, and mouth. The last thing we should be doing is putting something on our child's face that causes them to touch near those areas frequently. In a one-minute trip, in a 20-minute trip to Target last week, my daughter, who has anxiety when I make her wear a mask, touched her face nearly 50 times in 20 minutes. She was adjusting her mask, she was pulling it away from her face because she felt like she was suffocating. She was trying to make it fit comfortably. This told me she will not be able to tolerate wearing a mask all day while at school. I would imagine that this would be even more challenging for a younger student. In addition, mandating masks is only addressing the physical symptoms of COVID. We need to consider the emotional and mental effects of this potential mandate. According to UW Health, mask-wearing can cause significant anxiety, which I have witnessed personally. During an anxiety attack, the person may feel many symptoms. These include rapid heart rate, difficulty breathing, a feeling of suffocation, chest tightness, dizziness, and a feeling of becoming hot and sweaty. Knowing that my child exhibits many of these symptoms when she has a mask on reaffirms that she will not be able to handle an entire school day of wearing a mask. I don't believe she's alone in this. I believe there are a lot of kids that are going to feel the same way that my daughter does. It is ridiculous to force a kid into an anxiety attack when the numbers don't lie. We are not in New York, California, or Texas. We are in Brandon, South Dakota. Our numbers are low, the people in our community care about each other, and with increased hand washing, our kids can return to school safely without a mask mandate, which will have negative consequences for some students. I ask the Brandon Valley School Board to maintain your stance and uphold your original decision based on the survey results, our demographics, and the information I have shared with you, and taking into consideration the emotional and mental health of our students as well as the survey results that you guys received. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, both of you, for presenting tonight. Appreciate it. Um, next, we move on to the financial items, bills and claims. Mr. Lombard.
There's a lot of invoices presented to you tonight, over 1,000, actually, that we processed during the last week, totaling $2,919,000. Entertain any questions? I can't begin to go through all those, obviously, and I did have a few generalized items. We had about $150,000 of direct COVID-related expenses that I had earmarked. We had a payment to Pesca Construction for a building project of $1,600,000. There was a capital outlay payment on the intermediate school for $378,000. $220,000 was to McKinney Olsen for a property and casualty insurance for the year, the 21-school year, and $140,000 to Risk Administration Services for work comp expenses for the year. I would ask, any questions of the school board, if they had any, I'd entertain them.
Paul, those COVID-related, we do have COVID funds that many of those will be attributed to, correct?
They will be paid for through federal grant money.
Dr. Telkot, we have approximately $500,000 of that expended after tonight, or at least for the 2021 budget. Yep, we're trying to maintain about $200,000 for unforeseen, unforeseen expenditures that may come up in the future.
And Dr. Larson, that would include both personnel as well as supplies, correct?
Yes, absolutely. Had a listing of pay vouchers in the amount of $12,740, and also had presented to you guys tonight, food service bills of $101,466.
Any other questions for Mr. Lombard on the bills and claims? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims as presented, please.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lombard.
Okay, just real quickly, I'll, the cash report for the month of July came into the month with $28,368,000, $4.3 million of receipts, and $7.8 million of disbursements. Ended the month of July with $24,853,000. $7 million was in the general fund, $2.3 million in the capital outlay fund, $1,067,000 in the special education fund, $57,000 in the enterprise fund, and $14.4 million in the capital projects fund. The $4.3 million of receipts are detailed itemization on the next part of your packet. $12,593,000 of investments were shown in a report, under the investment report for your review. Payroll and benefits summary for the month of July, $1,563,000 of total payroll, $1,105,000 of deductions and benefits paid on behalf of the employees. Capital projects statement I have included in there. Generally, I don't have a lot of financial statements until the first quarter of the school year is over, but I did include a financial statement on the building project of the new elementary school. On that statement, you'll see down at the bottom, we have listed other items, classroom furnishings, library books, computer equipment, et cetera. We're in the process of bidding out the classroom furnishings right now. It's quite an intensive, labor-intensive process, but we're going through that right now. Lastly, there's a trust and agency financial statement, $146,000 total amounts held for others. Any questions the board would have? I'd entertain them.
Hearing no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented tonight, please. So moved. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to our general business section, Administrative Center Superintendent Larson.
Good evening, Chair.
A few, a few items to update you on here. This, this evening, Spartan Elementary Construction Project is progressing. Footing and foundation walls, masonry work is in progress. Would note that they have poured some, some concrete slabs, which allows masonry work, interior walls to, to continue. Our city of Sioux Falls playground park development expense agreement is all but, all but finalized. Would note, our summer naming, or our naming facilities will still occur here yet through the summer and the fall. Elementary boundary line will commence this fall. Construction will occur all of this school year, and then we will, are slated to open in the fall of 2021. fall of 2021. As far as schedule updates or issues or concerns, we're early in the game. At this point in time, we appear to be on schedule. So that's the construction overview. I would certainly invite any one of our board members to let me know if they'd like to go for a tour. I'd be happy to take you down and put a hard hat on you and walk the construction site. Brandon Valley High School activity attendance regulation, this is administrative regulation that's necessary due to COVID-19 navigating our capacities with our activities. Four tickets per participant. Brandon Valley High School students and Brandon Valley High School staff will be permitted to attend Brandon Valley High School activities this fall. I would note that Brandon Valley Middle School activities, we're still in the process of finalizing a plan and details with middle school activities because that takes so much collaboration with the Sioux Falls metro area schools that we play against in terms of what our schedule is going to be. Are we going to have to split A/B nights into two nights? And then also, we're going to have to limit attendance at our middle school activities just based on the size of our facilities and who can accommodate as far as numbers in each of those things. So would certainly encourage you guys to stay tuned on the middle school activities situation. We'll release that plan in the coming week. They're not slated to start until the 19th, the first day or the day after of school, so as soon as we have that finalized, we'll get that communicated out to our parents. Had the ability to attend the joint virtual conference, I will tell you, Ms. Saxer, Associated School Boards, Executive Director Wade Pogony, and School Administrators, Executive Director Rob Munson did a very nice job of hosting the first-ever and hopefully only ever virtual joint conference. Devin Hughes spoke to The Orange Frog. It's positive psychology, really an outstanding read if anyone's interested in trying to bring about a little positivity into their life during these interesting times. Challenges you to do some things. For example, I challenge each and every one of you as you leave today before you leave to send a positive text message to someone in your phone that you haven't communicated with in too long. Just send them a note to let them know that you're thinking about them and you hope they're doing well. So that's an example of what The Orange Frog challenges each and every one of us to do. Bus ridership. We have approximately 1,500 riders for this school year. If you remember, or recall, we asked families to not utilize school bus transportation unless absolutely necessary. Obviously, physical distancing or social distancing on a school bus is extremely challenging, and we received a positive response in the fact that 1,500 riders for this upcoming school year in comparison to about 2,300 that we had last year. So 65-some-odd percent, give or take, as far as percentage of ridership in comparison to previous years. All families had to contact transportation this school year prior to school district transportation being utilized. That is because we had a software update. Last year, in the years before, we'd always rolled riders over if they were outside of five miles and didn't have a bus pass. This year, you had to contact transportation because of a software upgrade. So we greatly appreciate our families' timely cooperation in that communication with transportation services. And then there were just a few changes made to district transportation services. No in-district elementary open enrollment is, transportation is allowed, and then we're also going to have centralized and established pickup and drop-off locations which help with effectiveness and efficiency of route timing. COVID-19 website, continue to push this, continue to ask you when you receive questions to direct our public and our parents to our COVID-19 information website on our webpage, frequently asked questions page, et cetera. Tremendous amount of information there in terms of all things related to COVID. Would certainly direct our parents there prior to communicating with the school or their school building. The lesser calls that we take right now on questions that are already answered out there, the more we're going to be able to get done as we ramp up to our first day of school. So appreciate our patrons' utilization of our COVID-19 centralized communication hub. Some calendar items to note. August 12th, new staff in-service for our certified staff. August 13th, we have all of our certified staff back in the building with in-service and workshop, and then August 17th and 18th, all of our staff return. August 18th is our virtual all-staff welcome back. That's something that we've really enjoyed doing the last few years is welcoming all of our staff, classified and certified, all departments into the high school for a big welcome back, and then we engage in having a district-wide lunch, getting to know one another, and share some collegiality. Unfortunately, this year, we are unable to have that onsite and in-person, so our welcome back will be done via virtual message. And then each school building will have gourmet school, child nutrition services, boxed lunches created for them. Director Anderson's taken care of that, and all of our staff are going to be able to go to their respective building or department and pick up their boxed lunch and enjoy a lunch on the Board of Education as a thank you and a welcome back. And then August 19th is the first day of school. With that, I would certainly entertain any questions you have.
I have a question. Can you clarify a few things? Activity attendance regulation. So clarification would be that this is a participant as defined as somebody who's on that roster, so you're a band, you're a contributor, you're a player that's on the roster. But for instance, if we're playing this into the winter season, a dance team comes in and performs at halftime, that's not a participant? Or a band performance at halftime of a football game, is that a participant? And are their parents going to be able to tell, or is it not? Because when I read in the paper, was whoever on the state activity association list. So what are we doing for those other pieces? That's one thing that I have a question about. And then in terms of, we're really trying to limit the number, which I totally get, I totally understand. So are we doing some spacing kinds of things related to that, like with the students and so forth, are we giving minimal intersection? Are we expecting that right now? Are we requiring, you know, what's the, how's that work?
So the first question I'll answer is on activities. We're going to worry about the fall right now, and we'll deal with the winter when the winter comes. Right now, for fall activities, I'll use your example of marching band at halftime. We have measured our facility, and given the varsity football roster, coaches, players, managers, cheerleaders, in addition to the marching band, we believe we can give all of those participants four passes for the home events for which they perform at. That is for the fall. Now, Director Marcel is working with Mr. Nedeston in finalizing all of those information. So the final plan has not been conveyed yet or relayed yet because we are also evaluating competitions for that specific group. What's been canceled, what they currently have, what has to be created, so we're navigating that. We believe, after having measured our facility, that we can accommodate appropriately.
So we can accommodate marching band for instance for the fall?
Yes.
May not be able to if we get the later doors, there's more space to get it, and we're worried about the indoors until, I'm totally on board with that. Now, because I think there was some confusion about nonparticipants, and I think that's a, we need to be able to demonstrate that we're using this based on space and there isn't on space.
Absolutely. And I'm going to say that during these challenging, unique, and difficult times, sometimes we have to make a decision and then work out some of the minute details as we plow through the process. For example, middle school sports, it's probably going to be two people per participant just because of the size of the gym after we take some measurements and run some numbers and that type of thing. But we'll, once we get there, we'll plow through that process and come up with what we hope is a workable plan. We know not everybody is going to agree or be happy, but we'll find the best way forward that we can. So that's where we're at for the fall.
Is that what we then, when you activate, is that what we extend to the guest team?
Correct.
They get the same, right?
Correct. All of the guests will receive four passes or tickets per participant.
And our students would show their ID to purchase a ticket?
Correct. Yep. Student ID can allow you to either buy an activity ticket or to buy a ticket at the gate. High school staff show their ID, who are able to enter with their activity ticket.
And good to note also that we, these things will be presented via local access channel, so.
Yes. Link's TV, Alliance Kail is phenomenal, absolutely. We've actually got an upgrade to our selling system, so that's top notch, and it will be better than ever before. It makes sense, it's online as well, so you can go to the high school homepage and watch home activities anywhere in the world via the internet.
True.
So activities, what was your second question?
Seriously, you're going to answer to me right now?
In spacing, would we?
You kind of answered that, I think, already with your.
The long story short, for kids, right now, we're having administrative conversation about do we split our freshmen and sophomores up and put them on the middle school and put our juniors and seniors on younger end as a potential option. However.
Don't worry, most freshmen will be running around. Most freshmen will be running around anyway, they don't sit in the stands anyhow, so.
High school administration is currently working on a plan as far as the student business goes. I don't necessarily know if we will tape off certain seats or not, or just ask our parents to exercise their discretion in who they, if they sit by their fate, et cetera. Good question. Anything else?
Thank you, Superintendent Larson. Mr. Lombard, anything additional tonight? Mr. Larson, anything tonight? Mr. Skibste, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Baud? Okay, just like that covers just pretty much. That takes us to board policy, and we have an adoption of EEAA district transportation.
Yes, Madam Chair, for the sake of time, I won't read it out loud as we've had it presented multiple times before. Largest changes again surround those, the elimination of transportation eligibility for in-district elementary open enrolled students, parents who choose to take their child out of their zoned attendance boundary and put them in a different building where we have space. We're not transporting those children, and then obviously the centralized pickup and drop-off points, both components of that policy change.
President Alum, I think since this has been on the agenda and since we've gone through it, I think there has been questions that have risen. I think it bears good judgment maybe just to, again, remind the public that the only changes to this policy was, again, what Superintendent Larson just said, was that it was about the open enrollment portion that has changed. What has not changed, what has always been in our policy, has been the one pickup and one drop-off location. That has always been in our policy as other things have also remained the same. So we just want to talk, again, that the only change is on the open enrollment portion that we've had to make edits to because of the needs and the growth of our district. Thank you.
I'll speak to that, I think. Part of the conversation, maybe we don't really change pickup points if you would pick up. I think some people thought that that's into this policy, and that's not a policy piece at all. That's just a practice piece based on our staff telling us what they need to do or what they think is in the best interest of the district and student safety and all those things. So I think some people thought that that was in policy, and that is not in this policy. But it is something that's kind of coinciding with this policy going in place, so I understand the confusion, but it's not a policy.
But then I would entertain a motion to approve district transportation policy EEAA as presented, please? There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to our general business section, item number one, Brandon Valley School District Return to Learning Plan.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to provide an update and present to you some information regarding our distance learning plan. Our enrollment for distance learning is approximately 340 kids. So certainly appreciate our families meeting the opt-in timeline that began in the middle of July and ended as of July.
You can see the enrollment numbers by grade, relatively consistent, ranging from 2024 to about 30. We've had, have worked through our processes.
Staffed out our distance learning personnel, et cetera. So that's where that currently sits. As we have new students enroll into the Brandon Valley School District, we may see those numbers go up a little bit because they'll be given the opportunity to opt into distance learning if they're brand new here and because they didn't know that there was a deadline to meet because they hadn't yet enrolled. So those numbers could trickle up, but at this point in time, that's where we're at, about 340. And then our traditional learning enrollment right now is about 4,300. So just an FYI on kind of where we sit with that. And then the last item that I wanted to present to you was just simply a visual regarding school masking strategy and the strategy spectrum. I can appreciate that some individuals may not think there is a spectrum and there's only two. I would tell you that when we look across the state of South Dakota and strategies that are used not only in our state but across the country, this is basically where I would lead you to as far as what is the spectrum of options that schools have to utilize. Optional, recommended, strongly recommended, expected, and mandatory. Our strategy is strongly recommended. With that, I would allow for board comment.
So if it's strongly recommended, what leads us to change the, we're going to expect it or accept that? Correct. I mean, are there certain numbers or triggers that lead us to go one way or other on the scale? Or are there, I mean, are those numbers, are those visuals, are the, you know what I'm asking?
Yes, I do. The answer is no. And the reason, the reason that there's not, and utilize the large diverse group as we create our COVID pandemic response plan. And one thing you will not see in our plan is green and red and orange and teal and navy blue because, quite frankly, as the superintendent of the school district, I think we need to do absolutely everything we can to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 that we think is practical and feasible. Let's do it from the very beginning because we know it's here and we're doing it. What I can tell you is the Department of Health collaborates and works with us in the event that we have a case or multiple cases, et cetera, and we would lean on them as we review and consider altering any mitigation strategy that we currently have in place. We do not have, based on the recommendation from the Department of Health, numbers that say, when this happens, close a building, or when this happens, close a grade, or when this happens, do this. Because it's such a dynamic and complex situation, you have to allow yourself that flexibility.
So in a strongly recommended situation, the hope would be that when the students aren't able to separate themselves based on distance, whatever, that they would wear a mask? Do we really expect that's going to happen?
I am strongly recommending that students and staff wear a mask when physical or social distancing is not possible. Do I believe that will happen? I am going to say, yes, I believe that there will be kids who choose to take that recommendation, and there may be kids that choose not to take that recommendation.
But if most of them don't take the recommendation, the wearing of the mask is severely limited in terms of its effect. I mean, I worked with high school kids for 37 years. Unless very clearly directed, they're not going to wear masks. Your senior retreat demonstrates it. You had about 15% of your kids show up wearing masks at a senior retreat when they are clearly not spacing. I can, whatever we do, we do, but I think we have to understand clearly, especially, and again, I'm only. clearly, especially, and again, I'm only speaking from high school students in my 37 years with them. It's not gonna happen. We're not. The very first school event that involved high school kids, we didn't see it. Now, and maybe masks are not effective and maybe, you know, all of that kind of, whatever. I'm not an expert. Um, all I want is for us to do whatever we can to stay in school as long as possible. And, and to give, for instance, our seniors the most normal school year that we can give them, or any of our kids certainly, but I'm just gonna pick out a group of seniors or whatever. Um, I, I, I wish we would do everything possible, everything possible, to make that happen. Um, I'm just concerned that strongly recommended is just not gonna be taken to heart by the oldest kids. And, and that doesn't mean that I don't think they're great kids and they're all those things that don't, please don't get me wrong. I just have worked with them for 37 years. I have a pretty good idea how this is gonna go. Based on your earlier syndicators, that's how it's going. I'm not recommending that we change or whatever. Um, you know where I stand on this. Um, that's, is where it is. I just want to stay in school as long as possible. Cause I think for the mental health of our kids and whatever, that's a good thing to be in school, a really good thing. Um, so I just want to do everything we can. But enough from me.
Uh, I respect your, uh, time that you've spent in high school and with kids. Um, I think the strongly recommend is, is language that we definitely have introduced. Um, it's stronger than I think what had been out in the public of the optional. I think that definitely needs to be thrown away. It is strongly recommended, and I think that needs to be transpired because strongly recommend is, I don't want to say hope, but that is, what we do put out there is we strongly recommend for the safety of our kids, um, and that if, if it agrees with you, if you're able to, that would be great. You know, that's, that strongly recommend, again, is the same we tried to do at the first meeting, come together as a community if you agree with it, if you're able to, if it does not cause anxiety, if you're comfortable in, that's wear the mask. Um, it's not, I mean, it is optional in the fact that, you know, we're not telling you that you have to, but we're strongly recommending that you do so because we do see merit. Um, so does the CDC, as they also recommend doing so. We didn't make it mandatory because we did want to allow not only for choice, because that is a right, but also because our administrators and our teachers in all the buildings, um, right now they're navigating new waters. There is a lot on their plates. By making it towards the other end of the spectrum, I can only imagine the additional administrative burden that they would have to do now in having kind of that unanswered. I was at a, at a state delegate meeting, and that was the one thing that we couldn't answer is, okay, then how do we then mandate it? What, what are, what's gonna happen? What do we do with them when they don't? And how do we, no one had an answer for that. Do we put all of them that don't then in one room? No. Do we send them all home? To who? What, what do we do with that? And for the teacher that has the littles, they're gonna spend all day saying, put it back on, put it back on, put it back on. I can tell you as a school district, we are doing everything we can and we've put a lot of money. There are now plexiglass individual shields in the elementary schools for those kiddos to sit behind so that they can, if they need to, take their mask off. We have told teachers, fifth grade and up, they can build the barriers around their desk and up, up the front of the room, so they can section themselves off from those kids. The school schedules so that they are recess less than 15 minutes. They pass between those halls, less than 15 minutes. So your close contact is less than 15 minutes. Now, again, does that mean we're never gonna have a case? Does that mean no one's gonna sneeze on somebody? Can't guarantee that. I can't guarantee you anything, but we are doing our very, very best to control what we can control. But guess what? A kid still enters high school wearing a baseball cap. A kid is still gonna enter high school, middle school, elementary school, not wearing a mask. Some are gonna use them as slingshots. Some, and we hope most, are gonna wear them because it's what's safe. And effectiveness, I don't know. I don't have the parameter on that. But if it causes more harm and if it's not what your family chooses, that's why we didn't mandate it. But we're strongly recommending for the safety of the greater good. Guess what the mask does for you? The mask protects you. And if that's what you feel that you need to protect yourself and your kids, wear the mask. If you want to play baseball, basketball, football, whatever hears in the fall, wear the mask. If you want to be in band and choir, wear the mask. So you don't be, you're not exposed. So that's, I guess that's why we're strongly recommended. And my book really checks all the boxes that we would want as a community. I get, I get the argument on both sides. You don't know how all of us here as a board is our personal opinions, that I'm sending a kiddo into and what I would want. We're strongly recommend comes in with the surveys and as a community where I think we hit on all cylinders. I really just want to put out one more plug. Our teachers are doing a phenomenal job getting ready for the school year. Hail, hail their praises when we ended last year and everything they're doing, and they're doing all that and more, getting ready for the school year. Okay?
I, I don't think some people realize how much sleep we lose. This sometimes isn't worth the money that we get paid to be at a meeting to make a decision like this. And I'm sorry, I'm just, you guys know me. I'm gonna say it like it is. It's gonna be blunt and it's not gonna be pretty. As a healthcare provider, I get it. I do. I also have a survey that says 75% of my community says, if you do this. I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna use the M-word. I hate it. I can't mandate people to vaccinate their kids. How can I make a mandate to wear a mask? I hate it. I mean, I bought a sarcastic one. He's cute, baby Oda, but it says ew people. I mean, let's be real. I don't like to wear them either, and I've had the disease. So I have the luxury of being able to walk around and not worry, worry about it. Um, I think like Ms. Saxer said, we are doing everything we can. So mom and dads, don't pull a Renee Ulam. Do not medicate your child with Tylenol or Motrin to take their fever down and send them to school. Because you know what? Guilty. I used to do that until I got a phone call from the secretary. I can just get a half a day in. Don't do it. Think about the broader scope. There is absolutely no reward for coming to school ill anymore. None. Zero. It's gone. You're sick, stay home. Wash your hands. I'm not sure where we lost that practice, but it's pretty disgusting when I'm in a public place and I see people come out of the biffy and there's no hand washing. That grosses me out. There's all sorts of other things that go with masks. Boogers, sneezing, you know, the whole ball of wax. If we're gonna, if we're gonna have this discussion, we can make it a little bit funny and interesting too. But know that everything, every decision that we have made and that our administration has recommended has not come lightly at all. We are doing the best we can. I realize that I've had some people say, what are you gonna do when the first person dies or whatever? I had a physician friend tell me, you know, I hate to say it like this, but when somebody dies in a car accident, what happens? Life goes on. When something else happens and something bad happens, what happens? Life goes on. And I'm not saying that lightly. I need these kids to be able to see faces. I need when you are, the teachers are away from them and they're behind their screens, they need their faces out of the masks. The kids need their faces out of the masks, even if they choose to wear them. They need to see human faces. They need to see interaction. They need to see if I'm disappointed when in something they did, or if I'm really excited that they got something. And I've droned on long enough, you guys have figured out where I stand. I am firmly behind the recommendation that was already made and that is strongly recommended.
I'll just make a, just a small comment, cause what everybody has said is, I backed them up 100%. But when we're, right now, as we've stated, we're strongly recommending masks. I think you're gonna see the faculty, administration, and kids, some are gonna do it. And when you say strongly recommended, let's just practice what we're trying to preach, okay? I mean, just be common sense. If you feel that you need to, put it on. If you don't, fine. But just use some common sense and we're gonna try to practice what, we're gonna, yeah, practice what we're preaching. So we can get this underway because we've done as much as we can for protective gear. Like Mrs. Saxer said, we've put poly around all the desks. We have.
Elementary only.
What?
Elementary only.
Elementary, yeah. And, um, we put big, uh, plexiglass in the high school and areas for teachers, correct?
Yes.
And so we're doing as much as we can with, uh, the resources we have. So I think, um, strongly recommended at this point in time is, um, a good spot to be.
Since everybody else has spoken, I will, uh, put my two cents in. Um, I think more than anything, we just need to realize that there is a lot of passion. I mean, we all care for the wellbeings of the kids, the staff, I mean, the community, you're, you're passionate for what you want. The kids, um, they just want to get back to living, you know, and thank God they want to come back to school, right? I mean, most of them, some of them would say, heck no, we want to stay home so we don't have to do work. Because that happens. More than anything, like I said, it's, it's the passion that's out there. We want to protect, you know, students and kids. Um, is there any question? Is there any, um, idea or form of taking temperatures before? I mean, there's been other events, whether you want to talk about sporting events, whether it's, um, whatnot. Is there any idea about taking physical temperatures? Obviously, it's gonna be slow going, but with the new thermometers, it's gonna be faster?
Uh, the answer to that question is, we have a daily individual health screening process that every child is supposed to conduct at home with their parent, and it's replicated when we come on site, uh, to screen for illness. We will not be taking temperatures, uh, at the school in terms of, um, head swipes or lasering. We are not temp checking for a variety of reasons. Uh, capacity to be one of the biggest 4,300 some odd kids and thermometers. It, it's also, um, some of the, some of the, um, items that we've looked through, uh, reliability, if they've come just from outside and it's 100 degrees, you've gotta, you've gotta, um, calibrate the thermometer. You've gotta check them twice actually to make certain that it's an accurate thing. So long story short is, no, we aren't temp checking.
So what you're saying is us as parents have to take some responsibility of how we are raising our kids?
Please don't give them Tylenol and send them to school with a fever.
I guess my last point is, I mean, out of these five, um, spectrums, the only one that's gonna be mandatory is mandatory. All the other ones are gonna be, I'm sorry, optional. I, I don't care whether it says expected. Yes, I can expect our kids to cover their mouths when they sneeze too, but that doesn't happen. So, yes, I would say what the board has decided, strongly recommended. We can always go stronger or less, but that's where we've set the bar as of right now, and that's where I'm at.
And I'll, I'll, the one, one of the things I would say is, the board has, um, the school district has given those people an option of not coming on campus. And we're providing, um, an educational opportunity. It won't be the same, but it'll certainly also be more rigorous than it was last spring because of course we all got caught off guard last spring. We've had more time, and everybody has them, and all of that. So I would be, um, if it's possible for me to be more vociferous, I don't know, but I would be if we didn't give them that option, if they didn't have an option to be off campus, you know? So, um, I, I guess, part of me, and I, I would go back to what the comment that was made earlier. Uh, the people who were making a decision on July 31st made it based on the information that they had available to them. And this board prior to July 31st said, this is the circumstance. So if we were to change our mind, then I think you really would have to go all the way back and give all those people. And, uh, I, I, I hope that at some point in time, we get to a place where we're not afraid to say, you know what, it's time to go mandatory, we're going, you know what I mean? Um, that, that is, is an option if we decide, or if we do have to shut down and in order to come back, we need to, or whatever. Um, but at least in this particular sense, um, seven, eight percent of our people have decided to keep their kids home for whatever the reasons might be. And we will respect that and provide them the best education that we can. And that does factor into this, into this decision, certainly. I, again, I just want us to be in school as long as possible. Um, hopeful, but we'll see.
And I think you've used the words synergistic or pivot or something?
Synchronous and agile.
That one.
Along with responsive. And I think Dr. Telkot brings up a, a great point, uh, with, are we willing to, uh, be reflective on our practices as we move through the school year and the process? And the answer to that question is, I think we have to be. And when we have, um, our work and our collaborations with the Department of Health in the event that there are, um, multiple positive cases and we review our mitigation strategies, et cetera, um, we'll see what they bring forward as far as potential changes. And when that happens, we will be responsive to, uh, to, to the needs that, uh, that we have.
Thank you. Well, um, Superintendent Larson, I appreciate your leadership and your administrative team's leadership on the Brandon Valley School District Return to Learning Plan, and I appreciate every board member that sits up here. Um, like I said, this is not easy. And, um, I just, you know, we want the community to do what's best for the community, but we want the community to do what's best for the kids. And, you know, parents, students, guardians, have these discussions, figure out what's expected in your own household, what you will do, and, um, we will be with you to support you in whatever we can. So thank you. Next, consent items number one through four. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Personnel items one through 25. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented.
So move.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. There is a, uh, large chunk there for information only, which is, uh, transfers, um, of staff, which is an administrative responsibility. Just clarify that for the public. Um, central office building permit applications, there are none. There was one, thank you, to the Board of Education from a person who has retired from the district. That takes us to our board reports. Are there any formal board reports that need to be reported on tonight?
Um, just real quick, had the executive delegation meeting in Pierre. Um, what I'd like to report back is on the whole topic of COVID-19. Um, as the districts were around, we had a short discussion, well, it wasn't short, on all the different plans in the districts. And walking away, there was a sense of pride. And I know that there's been a lot of conversations around, uh, the plan here in Brandon Valley. But what I would tell you is, as we took a break, there was many district representatives that came and wanted to know more about our plan. Um, they were very impressed with what we had in our plan. Um, they had heard from their delegates across the state about our plan and how they wanted their districts to mimic what was going on in Brandon Valley. Um, so I, I don't say that to say that we have all the answers or that it's perfect, um, but I will say that it has gained attention from other districts around the state. Um, I would also say is, as different delegates sat in that room and as they have so many questions that have yet to be answered, um, it was great to be able to sit and know that we've already started to tackle some of those issues. Um, are we ahead of the eight ball in some instances? Absolutely. Are we still trying to answer? Yeah, we're still answering as we go as well. Um, but it was great to be able to have that kind of support, um, as we took some of the breaks. Um, we weren't the only ones that had a good plan. Um, there was others that had good plans, but if I were to judge, you know, of course I was the best. Um, but I, I told them the same thing that was mentioned here. Um, will we pivot? Will we make changes as necessary? Absolutely. Um, and, you know, took notes of the others as well, but I just wanted you all to know that what you're supporting, I think, is also being echoed across the state. And it's similar to some others that are across the state as well. We don't stand alone. It's not, it was not the contest to have the most cool or innovative plan. That is definitely not the exercise that is going on right now. Um, our plan is very similar to some of the other large school districts.
Any other formal board reports tonight? Hearing none. Uh, that takes us to the end of our scheduled agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming.